Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30. Go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item is approval of the agenda. We do have an agenda addition for the FMW Chamber letter of support for their Good Jobs Challenge grant app. And we will take that after item number five.
I move to approve the agenda with addition.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda with addition.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Are there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Steve, have we had any correspondence from citizens?
No, Madam Chair, we have not.
Thank you. Any other citizens? Moving into our next item would be the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve as soon as we get them around.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the bills. And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. As always, those items, the bills did go out in our email last week or yesterday, so we do have those. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item carried, thank you. Item number two is our COVID-19 update. This morning, we have Becky and Jamie. Good morning.
So here's our weekly reported cases. That's been updated from last week, and we are starting to see a promising new trend of both not as much as a data lag as we had been seeing, but also our case numbers appear to be going in a downward trend. So for the 23rd through the 29th, we had 680 new cases reported. And then last week, the preliminary number is 299 cases statewide in Minnesota. For the 23rd through the 29th, we had a little over 38,000 new cases. And then last week, the preliminary number was a little over 13,000. We also are seeing the same trend in Cass County and throughout North Dakota as well. And then this is the reinfection data. So continuing, you know, as expected, to see this number increase week to week. So for Clay County, we've had 765 reported reinfections. Statewide, we've had 53,380 reinfections. And for the state of North Dakota, 11,434 reinfections. And again, the definition of a reinfection is a person is counted as having a reinfection if they've tested positive for COVID and then, again, more than 90 days after that initial And then this is the Clay County cases reported per week by date of test. So we're, again, hopeful that maybe we had reached the peak the week of the ninth where we really had that huge spike of cases, where we had over 1,500 cases reported during that week, a little less the following week, 680 cases reported the week of the 23rd, and then again, the preliminary number for the 30th at, or the week of the 30th at 299 cases. And then this is the EpiCurve, so cases reported per week since the beginning of the pandemic. So you can really see the waves that we've had throughout the pandemic, and again, that huge spike in cases that we saw in January. But hopefully, we are on a downward trend. We'll see if the next couple of weeks happen, if that continues. And then this is Clay County cumulative cases broken down by age. So the age group with the most amount of reported cases has been in that 20 to 24 age group. And our total cases now are at 18,291. And this is the updated graphic from the CDC, just showing the level of community transmission across Minnesota, still at that high level of transmission as we've kind of been stuck at that level for a while now. This is Clay County deaths per week due to COVID. We did unfortunately have one more death reported, so we're at 117 deaths throughout the span of the pandemic. Clay County hospital admissions per week. We saw a big spike two weeks ago, and then we were starting to see those numbers trickle down. So last week, we've had nine reported hospitalizations so far. Again, that number may increase as the data catches up, but nowhere near as high as it had been a couple of weeks ago. And then this is our hospital capacity information for our local healthcare systems. So we had seven adult staffed ICU beds available at the time of this report, and one staffed ICU pediatric bed available. Statewide totals, we had 16 adult ICU beds available and two pediatric ICU beds available. And then the North Dakota hospitalization data, we are seeing a downward trend on this as well. So there's currently 153 hospitalized with 15 in the ICU. That is down a little bit from last week. I think there was 184 hospitalized last week with 20 in the ICU. So those trends are also going down. And then this is the vaccine breakthrough report that we provide every week through the Minnesota Department of Health. On the left side was our cumulative percentages as of last week, and then on the right side is this week. So 9.697% of breakthrough cases that we've seen in Minnesota, and then breakthrough hospitalizations and deaths are, remain very low, at 0.25% for hospitalizations, and deaths even lower at 0.045. So still seeing very, very strong protection against severe disease with these vaccines.
Do we have any board questions?
I can wait till she's done.
Okay, thank you. And then this is just the updated graphic that MDH puts out, just really showing the difference in deaths that we're seeing in Minnesota compared to the fully vaccinated compared to the people that are not vaccinated. So again, the blue line is those that are not fully vaccinated. The green line are those that are vaccinated. So you can see there's a huge separation of data there. And then this is a graph that I had showed last week, too, just showing the distributions of, or distribution of variants throughout Minnesota, so you can see where Delta and Omicron intersected, and now Omicron is really the predominant variant. So 98% of all specimens that are sequenced now are Omicron.
Before Jamie talks about vaccine data, is there any questions?
Commissioner Campbell.
Becky, on the vaccine breakthrough report, the breakthrough cases, does that, does that, that represents being fully vaccinated and the booster, or just fully vaccinated?
So at this point in time, just fully vaccinated, as long as it's been at least two weeks since you've had your final dose. To my knowledge, they haven't started breaking apart, those that have been boosted versus fully vaccinated.
Okay. That would be an interesting piece of data.
I agree. If we can get that, I will share that.
Okay. Because I would think that that's going to either make the case stronger for the booster or...
Right.
And then I like to kind of find some good news in all of this, and I look at the chart with the Clay County cases per week. My first question, though, is, and I believe it was Commissioner Kaylee last week asked a question about the delay and how, how long, you know, how much that changes. So, for example, on the week of the 23rd, we had 680. I'm on the weekly. Yeah, there you go. So how, when you were here last week, did that number change, or would?
It did. So last week at this time, we had reported for the week of the 23rd that there were 597 cases. So, I mean, it's gone up about a little over 100, I guess, but way less of a data lag than we had seen in weeks previous where it had doubled or even tripled.
Okay. And then, so again, that 299, that's preliminary, but we can assume that that will go up a little bit?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. I just, I just was doing a little bit of math here, and from January 9th to January 30th, we've, based on the 299 now being the number, that's an 80% drop.
Right. Yes.
That's...
As long as there's not a data lag.
Well, it's kind of nice to get some good news out there once in a while, that this thing is really, seems to be going in the right trend.
Yes. Cautiously optimistic.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Jamie.
Look at the vaccine data and the testing information. So first of all, the first slide, looking at vaccine data across the state as of 2, 3, 2022, for all those five and over. And the people with at least one vaccine dose, we are at 73.9%, and those who've completed the series at 69.3%. And then just over 2 million have had a third dose or a booster administered during that time. Clay County continues to more than likely be underreported, but looking at the Minnesota COVID site, we're showing 60.6% for those five and over fully vaccinated, and almost 66% with at least one dose. So we're assuming it's a little higher than that, but that's where we are. And then, if we want to go to the next slide there, looking at the doses administered by Clay County Public Health, you can see that it gets to be lower and lower amounts, so just 20, I can't read that, 29 doses? Sorry, I can't read it. How many?
38.
38 doses last week, and a total of 19,141 doses were administered by Clay County Public Health alone. And then the next slide, see what we have planned for this week. So we have, or for last week, 38 doses total. The first doses, we gave three. Second doses, three doses. Third dose, booster dose, 27. And then the pediatric breakdown of five to 11, four first doses and just one second. So each clinic, we continue to provide all of the vaccines to all of the age groups that are eligible. And then, looking at our plans for this week. So first of all, we have clinic, two clinics on Wednesday, just one posted on the slide here, but we will also be at Concordia, at the Knutson Center. We were invited there from 9:30 to 1:30, and we will be providing Pfizer for 12 and over, first, second, and booster doses. Moderna, 18 and over, for first, second, and booster doses. And then our clinic in the Family Service Center will be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. for five and over. So for those, Moderna for those 18 and over, first, second, and booster doses. For the 12 and over, Pfizer, first, second, and booster doses. And then for those five to 11-year-olds, the first and second doses. I'll also mention that we had our preliminary planning discussion about the six-month through four-year-olds. MDH is reaching out and asking our capacity and our team plans to continue to provide that vaccine through the Family Service Center when available. So we will be preparing for that, and we'll continue to provide the other vaccines as long as people keep coming in. We will do that. We did have our clinic last week in the public health clinic, and we will do that again this morning, just because of our low numbers. We had 20 people registered yesterday, so we can handle that in our, in our, with less staff and in our clinic. So that'll be our plan for tomorrow as well. And then the next slide, we'll look at the testing, so Vault testing site data. And Becky put this graph together kind of just to give us a percentage, you know, looking at the positivity, right? But we also have the vaccine report from them as well. So for the week of 1/23, 23%, which was down a little bit from the previous week, which was 27.5%. And that has been our highest. Last week was over the last four weeks. And then just, I did take a look at the Minnesota COVID site, and they're still posting that Morehead COVID site as the same days and same hours, I'm sorry to say. But it is still the Monday through Thursday, 11 to 6, closed on Friday and Saturday, and then on Sunday from 11 to 4. And they are offering the rapid test, or antigen test, for anyone two and over, and also the PCR test as well, so that that's lab confirmed. And I guess I just checked that again last night to just make sure there weren't any changes, and that's what they're posting. So then, looking at our, our report, the left-hand side of this is the only thing that seems to be moving, but basically, through the week of January 23rd, number of tests that week, 2,354 with 550 of those positive, and the 43, or excuse me, 23.36% positivity rate. And they are not giving us the breakdown of the rapids and the PCRs anymore. Any questions about that, or comments about that?
Commissioner Campbell.
Jamie, I have one question for you. I've heard from some people about the rapid test, where they might take that one or two times, and it's showing negative, and then all of a sudden, they get a positive one. Do we know anything about the accuracy of those rapid tests?
Well, what we know is that the rapid test is most accurate if you have symptoms. So they recommend the PCR test if you are not symptomatic, so. And it's a snapshot in time, so if you do a rapid test, and it's negative, it's negative now, but if you do it again. But anytime you get a positive test, our epidemiologists are telling us it's a positive, so.
Do they know, is there, do they see too many false negatives?
False negatives are going to be more likely if you don't have any symptoms and you do a rapid test, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gross.
Any question? When you have these clinics and stuff like that, and you have to have all kinds of vaccines ready there, what happens to all the extra, I mean, we must have extra stuff there. How long do you keep that, or what?
You can't keep it. You know, it's very short turnaround, four to six hours. And so what we do is we reach out to the corrections facilities, to the juvenile detention center, to the homeless shelter. We are going to homes of homeless people, so we do that at the end of every clinic. But there was an information that really came out from CDC yesterday that said they really want us to stop worrying about wasted doses. There's plenty of vaccine. They would rather we gave one dose to a person, especially children that needs to be vaccinated, even if there is waste. So they're pushing us to continue to use that vaccine that we have. And again, once, at the end of our day, it's not any good the next day, but they're saying if someone comes in and wants just one shot, we should do that. We should serve them, because there's a lot of vaccine available, so. But otherwise, that's what we do. We run around the community and try to use up those doses, and we've been doing that since the very beginning.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Becky, a few weeks ago, you talked about what the booster does in our bodies and the importance of that. I was just listening to an interview with Dr. Fauci, and he was talking about how the vast majority of the population that was planning to get their first and second doses has done so already. And so now is a good time to start focusing messaging on the booster. So I was wondering if you could talk about that again, the importance of the booster and what it's actually doing in your body.
Sure. So the booster dose is, it raises your neutralizing antibody levels. So after a period of time, usually five to six months, we're seeing waning immunity after the first two doses, or one dose of J&amp;J. So it's really just helping to raise that antibody level, which is kind of like our first line of defense when we're infected with the virus. Does that kind of explain? You know, and especially if you're at high risk for serious infection, the booster is really, really vital.
I think you said last time, there's a couple different kinds of immunity cells?
Correct.
Yep. And so there was that first line of defense, which was really boosted with that booster. And then there's the more long-term ones. Can you talk about that briefly?
Correct. Yeah, so we have, I mean, the immune system is incredibly complicated, and there's many, many, many different types of cells. But in essence, yes, there's that first level of defense, which is our neutralizing antibodies, which is what the booster dose is helping to raise. So it helps you to really reduce serious symptoms. But then the second line of defense is our T-cells and B-cells, so those are the memory cells. And that's what keeps people out of the hospital and from dying. So you might, you know, you might wind up getting a breakthrough infection, and over the course of a couple of days, your body is able to fight it off.
Do we happen to know what rate of our population that was fully vaccinated has gotten their booster shots, where that is at?
We do not have that data.
Then my last question. You brought up the kids under, four and under, which I happen to have one at home. Is there an expected timeline for when that will receive emergency approval?
So it, it did just go to the FDA, so then the next step is to go to CDC and, before it becomes approved. So the timeline, you know, I'm not sure exactly, but the fact that Minnesota is asking us if we are prepared and can respond, it, hopefully, that will be soon.
Thank you. Yes? Thank you. Commissioner Ebinger.
Just looking long-term, we've gone through the booster phase. Do we have an idea how long the efficacy of that lasts, and what the projected tactics that we're going to, we're going to employ after that? Is it going to be an annual booster? Or do you need to go through the whole series again, or do we have any idea where we're going?
You know, I don't think I've heard anything real specific unless you have. Jamie, I think one of the general thought processes is that it likely will turn into a yearly vaccine that you would get, like the, like the flu vaccine. I, you know, it may wind up turning into a three-dose series to start with for people that have never had a COVID vaccine, but I think, you know, time will, time will tell on that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Circling back a little bit to the Vault testing and hours and availability, I know when Representative Keeler and I were on the call with the Governor's Office and MDH, they really stressed their inability to provide service there over 40 hours, and that was really the hang-up to adding additional hours. They're not even open 40 hours. So I think that, one, I'm glad to see that the trends are downward in terms of positive numbers within the community, and also see that there was a rise in tests administered at the Vault site. But I still, still really do believe that an earlier option for testing would be in our best interest. And I know that Mayor Carlson and I will probably be reaching out to Kathy towards the end of the week, I think, to circle back and readvocate for adding an early morning option, even if it was just a Monday morning, and then maybe a Friday morning. But I'm disheartened to hear that even though the locals on the ground are really trying to add availability, it just is falling on deaf ears. That's just frustrating. My soapbox will be removed now, so. Anything else? Commissioner Ebinger.
Have we ever heard from Vault executives? They said they were going to be contacting somebody with the county? Has that happened?
Vault executives did come to the site without reaching out to Clay County Public Health. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thanks for your work. We appreciate it. Okay, you do have a request. Your next item would be item three, Jamie, the request to fill a vacated public health nurse position?
Yes, thank you. We did have a resignation in our adult health case management department, and so we are requesting that we be able to advertise and hire to fill the full-time registered nurse case management position. And this position is supported by the funding that we have a contract with the health plans through, through waiver services, so that's fully funded through that program.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the request.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted.
Thank you, Jamie.
Item four, the authority to sign a Minnesota State Department of Public Safety grant. Are we waiting on James still?
Yeah, so.
That's okay. Can we skip to item five? So item five, then, would be the Clay County Solid Waste Transfer Facility. There's a change order, number three.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As you mentioned, change order three is before you for consideration. There's four, four items. CP 3A for $171,373. AL 03 for $32,701. PR 2A for $3,395.76. And also CP 008 for $1,617.59, for a total change order of $209,087.35. Just to give a little bit of information, if you recall back earlier this year, when we first got the, the charges, or the guaranteed maximum price for the, for the facility, we asked them to go back and do some value engineering. And they did do some value engineering, and as a part of that process, we asked Burns and Mack to, to do some different architectural, mechanical, and structural concrete changes. And we removed a fire pump originally was, had its own area, it was outside. We moved that into the building, which required some architectural changes to the pre-metal, pre-engineered metal building, also some framing doors, hardware, and finishes to protect it from, protect it from the vehicles entering. There also, there also were some additional concrete that that was needed. After the architects did the, did the work, and construction engineers went to look at the project, there were some additional concrete and supports that needed to be completed. Again, those two items were $171,373. The, the waste water, or excuse me, the waste works data collection is a kiosk. Rather than handout numbers at the scale house, the, the truck drivers will be able to come up and pull a number. And so the kiosk is hardware, software, that will be added right outside the scale house. And again, this was something that wasn't identified in the original, original documents. And that, the installation and purchase of that is $32,701. If you recall, back at the, beginning of the project, as part of that, the change that we did, we had two entrances off 34th, or 34th Street, and we moved one of those entrances to 15th Avenue. And with that, we had to make some changes to, to 15th Avenue that required widening of the road, and also some signage changes. And so we're working with the City of Morehead on, on the road piece of that, the striping that's going to be coming forward later. But for right now, we had additional signage removal, salvage, and relocation of those signs as part of that project, and that was $3,395.76. And then the last one, CP 008, is door hardware. Joe went through the, the facility and made sure that we had the, the right hardware and all the doors, and different stripping was added to a couple of different doors, from the cold storage into the heated areas, from household hazardous waste and, and the administrative wing. So with that, I would yield for any questions.
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the request.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion.
I just think on attachment C, that signature should change from my name to your name on that.
Okay. Sure. We can do that. And would just note that these would be coming out of, the funds would be coming out of owner contingency. I know that we've had some discussion on that in previous, previous discussions, and with, with the additional addition of that, that would deplete our, deplete our owner contingency piece. But we do have some additional premium dollars that we have access to that we took out with the bond that can address future change, change orders that are coming from us.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. Agenda item?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. This past Friday, Commissioner Campbell and I received an email from Shannon, full executive director of the Fargo, West Fargo Chamber, requesting, requesting the letter of support for a Good Jobs Challenge Grant that was made available through the, through the federal ARPA funding. You know, we certainly know that we have some workforce challenges here in our area with, with over 6,000 open jobs just in the Fargo-Moorehead area. And so this $10 million grant would, would work at developing partnerships with existing businesses and either, and unemployed or underemployed. and unemployed or underemployed citizens with job training. The focus of this grant is going to be cybersecurity and IT positions, manufacturing, agricultural based programs partnering with NDSCS, the University of Mary, and Emerging Digital Academy. And also the Moorhead Career Academy will be providing some adult basic education. As we've kind of seen from time to time with grants, there's a pretty short window that they're open. And Shannon was very apologetic for the short notice on this. I did speak with Madam Chair yesterday and determined that this grant application is consistent with the workforce focus that this board has had. And we did clarify that this letter does not tie Clay County to any financial support. It's just utilized to enhance the chamber's grant application. And so the attached letter was signed by Madam Chair yesterday, and we did provide that. But we wanted to bring it forward for your approval and discussion. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Move approval? That's okay. A motion by Commissioner Kaylee to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Certainly, this is not a standard of practice that I think we've done in the past in terms of signing a letter before the full board's approval. Unfortunately, sometimes in grants deadlines happen quicker than it would take to advertise and bring to the full board. And the only reason I felt comfortable signing this and sending it yesterday, one, because of the noncommitting of county funds, but also because Commissioner Campbell, who has served in that role, and certainly Commissioner Ebinger understands the general goals of the organization in terms of workforce and workforce development and seeking grants, as many grants as possible, to help us facilitate those. So certainly appreciate this board's understanding in terms of the timing of this, but also in hope that we can secure some funding. Anything else? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you. Steve, are we still waiting on James?
Yeah.
That's fine. Rory, are you ready? Item six would be the department update from Technology Services. Rory Schmitz, good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners, for letting me discuss our department update a couple of months early here.
Thanks for being ready.
Thank you. Only 60 small slides. So our department makes up nine of us, myself and four systems administrators and four computer support specialists. And we are, nine of which HR had shared some employee count numbers for us over the last few years. You can kind of see the rise and a little bit of drop there last year. But we're kind of climbing back up here. And as you can see on the next slide, that really falls in line with what we're seeing with our help desk service requests. And I see where that red arrow pointing down is. That's really kind of the start of the pandemic for us where everybody started working from home. We really had that big push to get every, all the remote workers set up, the hardware and software and everything required to make that happen. And it continues to climb, just like the previous slide. Up until the end of the graph here is January of this year, which starts to drop as we start to transition into a new help desk ticketing system. So you'll see that drop. And then, you know, in future years, we'll have a different reporting mechanism, different ways of gauging our metrics and how we provide support for our county staff. I wanted to share some costs involved with, as we onboard new employees with the county here. We have 615 total, 456 of which are full time and 159 which are variable hour, part time, seasonal, temporary employees. But these costs involves, aren't always advertised when we bring on new employees. So just taking an example of a full time employee, you know, ranges kind of from $2,200 up to $2,600 just for IT hardware and licensing and software. And then if they need a cell phone, you know, that's additional cost per year upfront cost. Other things to consider too, you know, when we're working with Joe and his department maintenance and if we need to remodel, you know, there's some of those wiring costs involved and some office space costs involved as well. So in the last year, coming up to this point, and then hopefully the trend is going forward here, we start looking at more cloud hosted options for our software and services. So far, this is what we have, different departments. Just in December here, we pushed our old legacy AS400 platform to a cloud or a hosted provider down in the Twin Cities area. Highway just completed their transition to a cloud platform, which just improved serviceability for all the employees and staff involved with that. Attorneys will be moving along here. They're pilot testing some software starting this month. And hopefully by mid to later this year, we'll have them moved off to the cloud too and just provide more options for them. A couple of the countywide services you might be more familiar with, Microsoft Office 365. That's our, kind of a big one for us. It's kind of our bread and butter for everyday productivity. Time cards moved over the summer this last year as well. And I foresee this trend continuing as, you know, cloud options are cost effective. You know, they don't cost as much, if any, extra. It just makes sense to move to a more scalable product. That's my last slide here. Things we're noticing in the IT industry is, just like everything else due to the pandemic, you know, fulfillment delays, there's, you know, shipping delays, cost increases to make up. I don't think that's anything new. And I think we see that across the board of the county. So far already in 2022, we've had price increases with our renewals of our software, which hasn't been anything less than 10%, which unfortunately I haven't been able to, you know, project that back at budget time this last summer. Sounds like those are the trends set in our industry at least. So hopefully, some of the vendors aren't continuing that large trend year over year. But that's what we're looking at right now. Some of the mitigation steps we're providing just locally in our offices, looking at similar products that cost less, transitioning to some of those just to reduce the cost as much as possible. Some of the hardware and software funding that we had during the pandemic, of course, CARES Act and ARPA funds. We really accounted for the hardware. You know, everybody received a laptop that worked from home. You know, we had 300, 400 of those laptops. Those were accounted for. When I took over in May of this, 2021 here this last year, one thing I did not account for, did not know about, was the software funding that came out of those CARES accounts. You know, looking over our budget items and our lines, that's one thing I missed. So there are a few items that we got hit in our department here, you know, November, December timeframe that I was not aware of. Lastly, I wanted to discuss our status of our Microsoft agreement. Every three years, we renew an agreement with Microsoft. We lock in a price. And this year, January 31st was our renewal date for that. We submitted our purchase order, our payment, projected estimates in early January. It takes Microsoft about three weeks. You know, we work through a reseller named SHI. They process everything on the backend for us. And the first offer and first submission was rejected by Microsoft. So new agreement typically would start February 1st, which we are now in a grace period, a 30 day grace period while they kind of go back and forth and negotiate pricing. And it had to do with some licensing that Microsoft didn't account for. That was grandfathered in from the previous three year term. So we're still waiting to hear back on that. But potential impact of that could be nearing the $30,000 range that we didn't account for during our budget time last year. But just something I wanted all of you to be aware of. As we get more information, I will, you know, I can bring it back to the board. And if there's something we need to take action on, I'll bring that to your decision.
Commissioner Campbell.
Rory, you mentioned the software prices. You mentioned something that some of those are up anywhere from 10% to 15%. And that's something that you hadn't taken into consideration in your 2022 budget, right?
Correct.
And now you mentioned the Microsoft contract is up. When they talk about those price increases, do they give you a reason as to why they are what they are?
Some of our local resellers of, say for the 10% to 25% price hikes, that's just with one vendor of a couple of different products so far this year. I did inquire about that, and they said that seems to be the trend with all of the products that they support. You know, unfortunately, a couple of these are what I would consider the best products that fit our needs. But like I said earlier, mitigation steps, looking at other, you know, evaluating other solutions to see if we can, you know, find ways to cut costs or adjust our department a little bit just to accommodate for some of those price increases.
I would encourage you to let Steve know when you get some more firm numbers. And I certainly think that it should be a topic of discussion for our ARPA group to see if there's any relation to that as to why these increases are happening the way that they are.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I just, it's worthy of the look.
Anything else?
It's all for me.
Right. Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You so much. James is here, so we'll go to item number four, the authority to sign a Minnesota State Department of Public Safety grant. Good morning, James.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I apologize for my tardiness this morning.
It's okay. Things happen.
I'm requesting the authority to sign the grant that we received back in 2019 for two years to cover two case manager positions. And we got accepted to be renewed for that for two more years. Total amount over two year periods, $257,614. There's no matching funds required. I'm requesting permission to sign that grant and be the authority to execute that grant with the state of Minnesota.
Thank you very much. Any board questions?
Move for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve. And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could note, these two positions actually came about after the expansion of the juvenile center. At the time of that expansion, there was additional staff that were needed in the nonsecure area. And I think it's just a note of importance that as we are fortunate enough to get these, another two years of the grant, that originally, these two positions weren't as a plan as far as that schedule. What James did is he was able to utilize that within his staffing plan. And so I just want the board to be aware that in the end, in two years, if this doesn't go through, I know that this board always talks about if we accept grants, we want to make sure that if we don't get them anymore, then, you know, what are we going to do with those staff? I just wanted to point out that we've been fortunate to receive these grants. So we were able to save dollars. And so those positions would be needed, replaced. We just were able to utilize the grant funds to pay for it.
Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, request from our facilities director, Joe Olson. A number of requests this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Which one's up on the list first?
A request for the courthouse HVAC.
HVAC, okay. Okay. Before I get into that, just wanted to update you a little bit with the capital improvement plan. You'll see me here probably a lot in the next month to six weeks here with the supply chain and prices going up. We originally had a three phase process here to do projects slowly at a time systematically. But now with this, with all the price increase, everything's on the table. And we're going to push everything to price it out and get it approved. So save some money there hopefully. But yeah, exact, so the HVAC system for the courthouse, this is part of the capital improvement plan that's in ARPA pot of money, we'll call it. I got a quote for $28,000. This is kind of proprietary. Usually I get two quotes on this. But this is a software system that runs all our heat pumps throughout the facility and just everything that has to do with this building in the courthouse. So I'm asking to move forward with this project with train company amount of $28,000.
And as noted, that funding source has been identified as ARPA. And we did think that would be around 30, so it's a slight decrease.
Yeah, yeah. Madam Chair, it was, I believe, the budget on that line item was $28,000, so.
Move for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve, a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Your next item is the request to advertise for bids on the air handler replacement project.
Yes, so this is, this is just a little history on this. We have a line item within ARPA funds with a budget of about $300,000 that covers a few different projects. And within that line item, this air handler project falls within that. We feel like the estimated amount is, well, you see it down there. I'd like to, requires to go through that RFP process. So the goal is to start advertising, actually, I'd like to change, just a note change on here. I'd like to start advertising February 14th. That's when the paper would, that's their next cycle. So we would start advertising February 14th and open bids, run that, and then open bids on March 8th and award project on the 15th.
Move for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the request. And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you, Joe.
Just a quick thing on that too. That's basically the massive air handler that runs the family center from fifth floor all the way down to second. So just a 10,000 foot look at it anyway. So I'll be back with that one.
Great, thank you, Joe. We're a little early, so I'm not thinking Dave's here yet. He is here. Good morning.
We've never said that before. We're a little early, aren't we?
Good morning. We're looking for an approval of the final contract voucher for CASAD 19.
Yeah, I can have Justin give a little update on that. That's our construction project in the city of Glendon.
Yeah, so today we're bringing forward the final contract voucher for SAP 400.
Yeah, so today we're bringing forward the final contract voucher for SAP 14-619-019 and SP 14-090006. So, there was federal funding on this project for the sidewalk. And this was a joint project with the city of Glendon. It was a complete urban reconstruct, bringing a previously rural section to an urban section, complete with a new sidewalk, 10-foot trail, two storm sewer lift stations, stormwater ponds, and new city infrastructure. We felt as though the project went really, really well. It was kind of a facelift for the city of Glendon. It did take a little bit longer than expected. The first summer of construction was extremely wet. But overall, I think the city is very pleased and the county is very pleased with the outcome of the project.
If you can see, like, the original bid was 6.592 million. Final amount to be approved was a little bit higher. I believe when you do break it down on our share and the city's share, some of the overruns were more so on the city's side.
Yep, so from the initial bid, we were actually like $39,000 under what the county's expected contribution was going to be.
Thank you for clarifying. I did have a question in regards to that, whose share saw the increase, so I appreciate that.
So, does Glendon have to approve this, too, or?
Correct, yep. According to the MOU, so I suppose it could be contingent on also the city's approval of the final voucher as well.
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are you here to speak on anything on the agenda, those in the audience? Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee.
Last week, the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council Leadership Group met to plan out our meeting for February. And then, the morning of Thursday, the 3rd, our Joint Powers Group met. Commissioner Campbell was also in attendance at that meeting. We discussed new potential dates for that intergovernmental retreat. I haven't heard back if that's been finalized and reserved yet. So, I'll hold off on announcing that date maybe. And I'm not finding my notes from that meeting, so maybe Commissioner Campbell can fill in the rest of that. Later that day, I attended the Local Advisory Council for Children's Mental Health. We discussed the survey that goes out annually to get a picture of what's happening with mental health providers serving youth. That goes to providers as well as families of children receiving services. We just took a look at those questions, and that will be distributed starting next month. And then, I believe the report to the board is in April? Is it April? So, that'll be coming up soon. Also, at that meeting, we just talked a little bit about what some of their clients are having trouble accessing. And I heard again that on the Clay County side of the river, the Moorhead side of the river, occasionally clients are having trouble accessing autism-specific services. Some providers have wait lists, and, so people are getting in, but that's one of the things that they noted at that meeting. On Friday, the 4th, I met with the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC for some board orientation. And last night, the Moorhead City Planning Commission met. We had three items for public hearing. The first was to vacate a portion of Fifth Avenue South. This was just a housekeeping item. It was thought to be done already. This is part of that underpass project, so that's right near Tasty Freeze. There had been a, what are those called?
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac. There had been a cul-de-sac planned at the end of the street there, and so it was just vacating that. And everything's been taken care of with utilities and stuff there. The second was a preliminary plat for the Makara Fifth Edition. A handful of citizens did attend to speak about this area. Most of the concern stemmed from wondering where the access points were going to be into this new addition, so locals not wanting a big through street right near their property for increased traffic. With the plan as it stands currently, that seemed to assuage all of their fears about that. There also was a local farmer who farms that land currently, who was concerned about what was going to happen and why that particular parcel is, is being approved for a preliminary plot and not some of the surrounding area. He also had some concern about, as that gets built out, where are the utilities going to run? For example, sewer? And would that be going then under his homestead in the future?
Was he the land owner or the land renter?
He is renting, so the city owns the property. And my understanding was, this is, there was like a grant to work on plating that out. He does own an adjacent property as a farmstead, and he, yeah, he rents that land that he farms. So, we said that yes, we will for sure be taking a look at where those utilities are going to be going in that area. But that's quite a ways down the road. The third and final item was a request of Hampton Place Development for a preliminary plat for Hampton Place Fourth Edition. There were no comments on that, and all of those items were approved. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross reports.
Last Tuesday, we had the building committee, which Joe reported, the dental office over in the family service centers is expanding, and that's going good. They're a little bit behind what they planned on being, but they're moving along all right, and they'll be completed soon. The fourth floor project update over here, as you can see, it's been moving along, and they're finishing it up over there. And then we had the ARPA bond plan, where they're, we're just getting some money for all the different, he had some of the projects today, and he's going to have some more later on. And the other thing that we covered today, too, was the HVAC issues over, excuse me, that was over at the Government Service Center. The heating over there isn't working quite right, or distributing the heat, not quite the way, they want to reroute some of that stuff. And that, that's another thing that's going to be happening, I don't know, probably this summer sometime, I don't know. Probably when they need the air conditioning, they'll be working on that. Also, we discussed that acidous building on the Highway 10. That's there now, when the new site's going to be operation. That is our building over there, sitting on Moorhead land, I think, and we have to decide what we plan on doing with that building. Do we sell it? Do we, I don't think we move it, a brick building, I don't think we're going to move it, but.
No.
We're going to, we have to decide, what, what do we want to do with it, you know? Do we want to utilize it? Do we just give it to somebody or whatever? But we have to come up with a plan there. And then, Tuesday afternoon, we had the criminal justice meeting. I'm just impressed how those, I mean, I, sometimes I wonder what these commissioners are doing there, because that committee is really working together well. You know, they come together well, and they work with each other good, and it's really a smooth operation there. And Chanel Chaney is running a good operation with that meeting, and I was impressed with what they had. And I noted that, too, at the meeting, that they're, they're running a good meeting there. I mean, and they're really policing themselves and doing a good job. I really don't have much to report on that unless Dave picked something up in the meeting, but they, they just doing their job good, and it was, it's amazing how they work together. Yesterday morning, at MRC meeting, and this you're not going to hear me say very often, it was a good meeting.
Sorry.
So, I got so many notes here from it, I don't even know if I can do all this stuff here. We're going to extend this meeting. But they had good speakers there. Rob Eklund, Representative Rob Eklund spoke on the broadband bill, you know, of course, we speak on that on every time, but he's trying to get it on a yearly bill that we don't ask for money every year, you know, and he's trying to get a yearly fund that we get some money yearly for that, you know, so. And then he also, he also talked on the buffer, land that's owned by the state or whatever, who, who takes care of that land, you know? Who's going to pay for that land? I mean, otherwise, the farmers have been taking care of their land and seeding and stuff like that, and who's paying for the buffer land that the government owns and the state owns? Broadband was a big discussion. Again, there's a lot of money, there's 185 million in federal money, there's about 110 million still in the fund from last year, there's 76 million approved again. So, there's around $280 million available for this national broadband. So, the goal, of course, is to get all of Minnesota connected, and they're working on that and getting money together for that. Well, there's concern for the, for the extra safety that they're requiring to go on with some, with some of the funds, with some of the projects in the state of Minnesota, but there's no money attached with these concerns, with these COVID money. They make these rules that the county's got to do this and do that, but there's no money attached to that. Closing, there's been closing of the driver's license bureaus in some of the counties, and they're concerned about that, getting to have the drive quite a ways to the next county to get your driver's license. It's a lot tougher, the CDL rules are changing quite a bit, and this is really getting tougher to get a CDL. I mean, here we are in a situation where we need more truck drivers and stuff like that, and now they're making the rules so tough to get a CDL that it's tougher to get a, get a CDL license.
Is that at the national level?
Oh, okay. Got a note here on score funding, but I don't know what, we're initiating something. I don't know, we're initiating score funding. I need to cover that a little bit better, but.
I think that discussion at MRC stemmed from the counties urging the state to re-look at how score funding is allocated down to the counties. And so, that's, that's something that this board has sent a letter of support to the legislature in support of as well.
Steve Godwell came on and talked about county program aid procurement. I don't, we're not in the, county-based purchasing, are we? Or is our county, we are? Okay, I guess they, we, they talked about that, that problem. Transportation funding, Mark Adana, who talked about that, about the $280 million. And a lot of those, that money has to have matching funds, and they were wondering whether you can use the federal funds that we've got to use, to use for matching funds. So, that hasn't been settled yet either, whether you can, whether you can use federal funds to match federal funds. So, it's sort of an interesting thing that's going to be coming up there, whether you can, whether you can do that. Nursing homes is a, one of the things that MRC has not been discussing is nursing homes, and we've added that to one of our priority lists. And there's 360 nursing homes in the state, and they're expecting about 20 of them to close, so, because there's new rules and no workers available. What she was saying pretty much, it's not so much that the workers aren't available, it's that they don't want to work. You know, it's, we got the people, it's just that they don't want to work. So, that's, that's where the problem is, some of the nursing homes, that they can't get help. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Ebinger?
Tuesday, the 1st, I attended the Criminal Justice Advisory Meeting with the Commissioner Gross described. Couple of things, since I'm on the Public Safety AMC Committee, there are some things that kind of jump out at me that, that we're looking at on statewide initiative. One of the things that we're doing here locally is we are, or our, our probation people are submitting to be one of four, or four counties are being considered for us to be a model on dosage probation, which is a pretty big change in how probationary assets are distributed among people on probation. A lot of it is dependent on local resources. We've got our proposal in. Right now, they're, they're pulling a list of what resources we have that can be useful in dosage probation, and that's one of the things they gave an update on. Pre-trial support and supervision, had discussions on that. Again, this is another thing that is being reformulated across the state. We've got three different components on how probation is provided at county level, some by Department of Corrections, some strictly supervised and paid for as county employees, some are probationary officers that are paid for by the county but are answerable and supervised by the state. So, there's this mixed bag. We're trying to figure out what works, what doesn't, and come up with some legislation on that. There were discussions on, on that. One of the things they've found, and this surprises me, but drug and alcohol testing does not change outcomes on who appears in court. So, when you're looking at pre-trial release, there's a big component of that with people with substance abuse and addiction, where they're rethinking that at a statewide level and locally. The sentence-to-serv program, which is right now kind of on hiatus with the retirement of Mark Dibbles, they're talking about re-implementing that around April or May when the townships need work crews. Discussions have been going with probation with Joe Olson and Carrie in the correctional facility to discuss what, what can be done to get the program up and running again. One of the things you've got to keep in mind is, right now, our, our correctional facility has got such a change in their, in their activities because of COVID. There may not be people available that can fill these work spots. It's kind of a moving target, and they're working, coming up with some answers. But I know come spring, a lot of the townships need these services, and they're making an effort to get them up and running again. Also, there was discussion on social services, currently assisting, providing comprehensive assessments and treatment coordination for people on probation. On Wednesday, the 2nd, and Monday, the 7th, I virtually attended the AMC University of Minnesota Extension Training, Leading Economic Transformation. Really a thoughtful, well-done training. well-done training, a lot of information, a lot of it is still out there on the page they developed and links. Just time-wise, it's probably going to be another week or two, I'm going to be going back and reading articles and trying to absorb it all, but that's part of the design, is giving you the ability to go back and work with it, throwing a whole lot of information at you at once, but it's been a very good course. I've completed it now, along with Commissioner Mojo, and now it's kind of playing a catch-up, but it's been a long time since I've done homework, so it's been a lot of fun. Thursday, I attended the WebEx meeting of the Statewide Emergency Communication Board, the Legislation and Governmental Affairs Committee, a pretty technical deal, but one of the projects we're in the midst of is Minnesota Statute 403, which basically describes the state operation of communication systems, was written before a whole lot of what we now use is in place, Next Generation 911, the ability to text to a dispatch center and get photos and all the stuff that we're looking at here in the future, the terminology isn't even included in state statutes. So it's really twofold on working on this statute, one is a technical rewrite, it's been submitted to the legislature, they have asked understandably for a one-page summary of what's in there, because it is very technical, I don't get half of it, and I've been around this stuff for 40 years, since before a lot of it existed, and this is stuff that really requires technical expertise, but we reviewed a lot of it, and the RAC members, the technicians of this committee are going to put together one-page summary for the legislators. There's also a governance factor in this that's not completed, and restructuring the governance of the armor system, of the regional dispatch centers, and what, how they work with the counties, how they work with the state, that's a work in progress, and it's going to be a continual discussion with this subcommittee in mind now. We have a 911 telecommunication working group, one of the things that we really need to come up with, it's just like jailers, probation officers, law enforcement officers, we have positions in dispatch centers all over the state that aren't getting filled, and we need to come up with some incentives, and one of the things that's been put out there is to come up with the kind of pension system that law enforcement has, where you don't have to wait till you're in your 60s to draw a pension, because telecommunications have a very stressful job as well, and give some incentives to come in, get involved, and stay. So they're looking at the two systems that law enforcement currently have for pensions, one is part of the state system, the people that work in the state patrols, dispatch centers are on, and the other is part of the PARIS system that local law enforcement, state and municipal, or county and municipal are in. Both of these have features for law enforcement officers that we might want to consider for dispatch centers as well, and that's a work in progress. Later that day, I met with Pastor Sue Kesterman and Tim Hiller. Pastor Sue was executive officer of Churches United, and Tim is, I've just met him, the chief developmental officer, and we just discussed the Silver Linings Project, which is a 55 and older housing, permanent housing for homeless seniors, it's proposed and being worked on, and they gave me an update on that. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Before I begin my report, I want to comment on one of Commissioner Ebinger's reports, and that's regarding the workforce issues that come out of our, that Mark Dibble and Monte Martin both did an excellent job on, and I think we need to really do whatever we can to get those groups back in place as soon as possible. They did a tremendous amount of public service work for our smaller communities, and, you know, like our fairgrounds and all of those types of things that were extremely important, and equally important was, you know, some of those, some of those folks that are in our facilities, it allows them a chance to get out back into the community and work, potentially work off some of their fines or whatever they may have, and provide some community service. So I would encourage whatever we can to get those programs back up and running as soon as possible.
Agreed.
Okay, and then I'll move on then. My first meeting was the Building Improvement Committee that was held on February 1st. As Commissioner Gross reported, we did talk about the dental expansion update, they are currently going through, continue to go through design work and their financial plan process, so hopefully that, something will happen, we'll hear something on that soon. That fourth-floor fit-up over at the Family Service Center, that is about a month away from completion, that is a little bit behind also because of the delay in the dental expansion plan itself. The ARPA and BON plan that Commissioner Gross also talked about, what we did there is we basically reviewed every line item that was both on the BON side and the ARPA side, to see where we were with our original projected costs on those and what the current costs are. And so far, Joe has done an excellent job, and it seems like we're, if anything, we're coming in under anticipated costs on those projects, so that's excellent news. Commissioner Gross also talked about the Government Center HVAC issues, we did act on the largest one of those that are in the ARPA category this morning. There are several smaller ones that we will be looking at doing later, but that was the most critical one to get the bids on and move forward on that. And again, then we did have that discussion on the Household Hazardous Waste Building, and we do own that, and I believe the city also may have an interest in that building as well, but we'll have to wait and see. On Thursday, February 3rd, we had our Clay County Joint Powers Committee meeting, which Commissioner Kaylee reported on, I just a few things to add to that. I guess I'm going to go out and say it, she didn't say it, but our tentative dates right now for that are, the target date is April 1st with an alternative date of April 8th. We do need to make sure that, I believe Scott Stefis was going to try to book that room, and I haven't heard anything contrary to that, so I'm assuming those dates have been booked, but more to come. We also talked about the Joint Powers Committee's structure and the hosting responsibilities, and currently, a few years ago, DGF was added to the Joint Powers Committee, and they're talking about then allowing them to be added into the host rotation for that. And I brought up that somewhere along the line, I'm going to kind of lean on Colleen here a little bit, because somewhere along the line, there should be a document structure that was set up, and along with that would be the bylaws, and nobody seems to know where those are, Colleen, so I'm, yeah, I knew you would. And so as soon as you get that, if you can share that with me, and then we, then we're going to look at, does it require an amendment to that document, and so on and so forth for that to happen. So, and then we did, we did talk about the facilities meeting that we have, you know, once or twice a year as part of that. Originally, our March meeting was going to have the mental health issues in our jails and our jail administrator attend, but because of the change in the new jail administrator, we felt it would be important to wait till September for that update, to allow that new jail administrator, when the person is hired, to have some time before they come before that group. So with that change, we are looking at our April meeting then to have that facilities meeting discussion. And then yesterday, the 7th, we had our meeting with the Clay County Resource Recovery Facility. All is going slow with the extreme cold weather that we've had. We've talked about a few contingency items, and site and safety issues that are going on, and we continue to have a water problem that's, they have to de-water, and it's a, kind of a significant issue right now that they're having to deal with. But other than that, everything is going well, there's really not a whole lot to add, maybe Steve can add to that if he so chooses, but that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross?
I was going to add one thing on the government's, it's not just the heating that we're working on, there's the sound system too, I guess, if you're sitting in one room, having a meeting in one room, it can be easily heard in the next room or whatever, so. The privacy issue we have to work on over there, too.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. As noted, I also have been attending the Extension Economic Development Cohort, I concur, there's a lot of information that will continue to be helpful as we move forward in applying any of those programming or opportunities and input to Clay County operations, extremely helpful. I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting last week. We addressed a personnel policy change in regards to requests for leave, we did approve some moving expenses for a new employee, and talked about the 2022 Executive Committee meeting dates and times, as well as the future project list for the 2023, 2024 UPWP. On Friday, I attended the Detox Subcommittee meeting, we had a great discussion, Troy was able to provide a list of pros and cons for future growth facility that the committee had asked him to provide that information, will be part of our first Clay County Board Work Group. Certainly, there is a large number of decisions that need to happen in a short amount of time, and because there's so many overlap with so many different committees, I'm really excited about the opportunity for us to really get in and continue the planning stages for that. There was, as we had with our Resource Recovery Facility, some, a little bit of a hiccup in terms of procuring the grant dollars, we had signed a resolution of support for funding, the DHS needs a little more from this board in terms of more solid financial planning. My hope is that we can continue to work towards securing that soon. I worked with the chair, or the, sorry, I am the chair, I called you the chair. I worked with Steve last week on the grant letter that this board supported, thank you very much for that. I also attended the construction meeting for the Resource Recovery Facility yesterday. I am hopeful that we can continue to make substantial progress in that, even with the interruptions for supply and some increases in cost. I think that construction engineers is really doing a great job of managing the water on that for that, for us. And met with a resident in Kurtz Township in regards to an abandoned home in Rusted, forwarded that to the Planning Department and the Kurtz Township Board. I think that concludes my reports. Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, if I can just add, just looking at our schedules here with the Legislative Conference, that's going to be on February, or March 1st through the 3rd, I don't know if we're, I don't know if, Commissioner Kaylee, are you planning on attending that, and Steve, you are as well?
Yes, Mr.
And I am as well, and that means that our Clay County Joint Powers Board would have no representation from Clay County that day, so I don't know if we might want to contact them regarding that. They may not have any representation at that meeting, I just saw that now, and noticed the conflict.
It might be, if a virtual attendance is an option, it might be possible to have one of us do that virtually.
Yeah, seeing as how it's at that unreasonable hour at 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
Lakin had been on the bus for 20 minutes at that point. Is that everything?
Yes.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to clarify, Commissioner Gross, you are correct, we are not a county-based purchasing. I nodded inadvertently, so, sorry about that. On the 1st, I attended the Building Committee that Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Campbell have already addressed. That afternoon, I met with James O'Donnell, Sheriff Empting, and interim jail administrator Kerry Tooten in regards to our medical contract that we have through MENS. That contract for both of those agencies are to end this summer, and I've asked them to work on a RFP to bring before this board here in the coming next few, the next few weeks, hopefully. I met with Troy Amundson in regards to a series of issues, Detox, on the 2nd. Also met with Lori Johnson and Joe Olson that afternoon with Enterprise, leasing options, as you guys are aware, we lease some of our vehicles through Enterprise, and we also purchase some of our vehicles outright for our fleets, and have not evaluated that for a few years with the challenges that we have in getting vehicles and what we're seeing, we're having some discussion with them. I also contacted multiple county administrators who already are part of that program to receive feedback from what they had to say. On the 2nd, also participated in administrator update with Cass County and also City of Fargo, we discussed ARPA and also the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. On the 4th, participated in the Resource Recovery, Resource Recovery Cooperative Service Agreement discussion with representatives from the City of Moorhead. We have a, one area that we still are trying to work through, but we've kind of set at the end of this month to have a goal of getting that finalized and before our respective boards and council. On the 24th, met with the Detox Committee, Commissioner Mojo has addressed that already, also the Letter Chamber with the letter of support. On the 7th, participated in the owner meeting that's been addressed by Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell, as they addressed that water, it's about 300 gallons an hour, so the challenge is that when that pump doesn't run, they spend part of the week chiseling out, chiseling out that area with the ice each week, and so that has provided some additional costs that we'll see here in the future. But again, they've done a nice job and continuing to move forward with that. Yesterday, I met with HR on a series of personnel issues here at the county. Would note, we are conducting the jail administrator interviews this Thursday, and so we hope to have someone in that position permanently here within the next week or so, or at least the offer made. And also, just wanted to provide the board an update, we did make a conditional job offer to Azad Berwari for our diversity and ethnic community coordinator, he's accepted the position, he's held multiple jobs within our, within the FM region, where he's been the person who's bridged the gap with diverse populations, and comes with a bachelor's degree and also a master's degree in sociology from NDSU, and we're looking to have him start on the 14th, next Monday. He is going, his office is going to be out of the, out at the Government Center, and we're excited to have him on board. And then again, just to note, we do have the vaccination clinics here tomorrow on the 9th from 3:00 to 5:00 with Moderna, Pfizer, first, second, third, our boosters, and also flu shots. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I don't want to hear your report, Attorney Milton, or yours, Colleen, everyone else.
I noticed there's a few people that seem to be a little bit more suntanned than usual here.
Any further discussion? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.